We'll ask all of us to please rise for the dedication and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today to do the works of Stafford County's Planning Commission. Please give us wisdom and guidance as we think and deliberate, discuss, and decide the future of the county. Please keep us all in mind and put your thoughtful hand on us as we look towards making decisions that affect not only our residents of today, but of tomorrow, of the years to come, decades to come, and lifetimes to come. In the same we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is the call roll. Please respond when I call your name. Stephen Appicello.
Here.
Fillmore McPherson.
Here.
Albert Bain.
Here.
Crystal Vanooch.
Here.
Darrell English.
Here.
Roy Boswell.
Here.
And Barton Randall.
Here.
Planning Commission, we do have a quorum. The next item of business is election of officers. I'll ask on, for the Planning Commission, are there any nominations for the officer of chairman?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Vanooch for chairman.
Are there any other, are there any other nominations on the floor?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Appicello as vice chair.
Oh, not yet, not yet, just chair.
Just, oh, thank you, just for chairman.
Oh, okay.
Are there any, to ask again, are there any other nominations for chairman on the May I, may I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, congratulations, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, and thank you Commissioners for entrusting me as chairman for 2019. Now, to the next order of business for the election of vice chairman, so opening the floor for any nominations for vice chairman.
Again, I nominate Stephen Appicello as vice chair.
Okay, and we don't need a second on these, we just need to know, are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, will you please do a voice vote for Mr. Appicello as vice chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. Now, moving on to item C, election of secretary, do we have any nominations for secretary?
Nominate Darrell English.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Mr. English, any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that, we'll do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Congratulations, Mr. Appicello and Mr. English. Moving on to declarations of disqualification for this evening, on any items on the agenda, any disclosures or disqualifications? All right, seeing none, we'll move right along to the public presentations portion of tonight's meeting. This is a reminder to the public, there are no public hearings for tonight, there's just, if you want to come up and talk about any of the items on the agenda, this would be their time to come to the podium. We can engage in a direct conversation, but if you have specific questions that you'd like for us to research, we can always contact you with those answers or bring them up when we're discussing other items on the app, on the agenda this evening. You'll have three minutes, when the light turns green, you'll have one minute when the yellow light comes on. When the red light comes on, please conclude your comments, and please state your name, address, and the district that you reside, if you know that, when you come up to the microphone. Does anybody care to speak at this time? Come on down.
My name is Steve Grimes, I live at 129 Everett Lane, I'm in the Hartwood District. Just like to take a moment, I realize that you can't answer any questions related to the public hearing coming up on the re-engineering, I guess, or re-proposal for Cannon Ridge Golf Estates. I'm from Ambrose Estates, which is right next to it. I'd just like to highlight that we're sort of catching up on this as a community, we're a small community, but we butt directly to this redevelopment that's occurring, and if we wanted to maybe highlight a little bit about ensuring that attention to Green Bank Road and Scotts Ford Lane, there's going to be a closure there, as I understand it, a gate that's going to allow access to Lake Mooney for the actual county to access it, but members of the rest of the community won't be able to access Lake Mooney anymore. We're right next to Lake Mooney, it's sort of like we're right next to Lake Mooney, we all are on wells, can't get the water that's coming out of there, which is fine, but now the issue is, you know, getting access there. So we just want to understand what's sort of going to play out when it comes to making road changes there. Not necessarily adverse to it, just want to make sure we understand how that access coming off Scotts Ford up to Green Bank is going to change, and that we're just sort of prepared so we can let those folks who are in the development understand better. Okay? That's all I have, I appreciate your time, and in the past, Mr. Harvey's been very instrumental in some things we've done in Ambrose, and we appreciate your time, and we know it's a hard thing to do, lots of different opinions and thoughts, but look forward to the public hearing, I guess, in February on this. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, and if you want to give your name, address, or name and email address to Ms. Stinet over there, we can get it to Commissioner English, he's your district representative, and I'm sure he'd be happy to follow up.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else approach the podium, we'll close the public presentations portion of tonight's meeting. There isn't a carryover public hearing, but that is not open for public hearing, it has been continued for February 27th, the villages of Green Bank Proffer Amendment Reclassification. Moving on to this evening's unfinished business, item number two on the agenda, the ordinance 018-31, and for this, we'll recognize Mr. Brian Gooch.
Good evening, and congratulations, Madam Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. I do have a presentation here, and I can leave it at your discretion if you'd like me to go over the basics of this proposal, it has been discussed a few times before. This is the proposed RBC to PD3 ordinance amendments. Otherwise, we can go straight into questions.
I think, maybe, high points, since we do have a member of the public, just high points, really quickly.
This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 28 of the zoning ordinance to redefine the RBC recreational business campus district to the PD3 Plan Development III zoning district. This is related to a proposal by Silver Companies to develop 1,177 retirement housing units in the, generally in the area of the Cannon Ridge Golf Course. To summarize the requests, the applicant has requested an increase in the allowed percentage of retirement housing in the district from 30% to 45%. They've also requested to include farm wineries and agritourism uses as permitted uses. Staff is also request, or suggesting a number of amendments to the ordinance, including redefining the RBC district to the Plan Development III district, and revising the regulations. We're proposing to clarify how open space, district open space is calculated, because there has been some debate and confusion on that topic. The current language isn't written that clearly, so we're suggesting a number of changes there, and we're suggesting that the increase actually go to 47% to accommodate the proposed development due to the recently submitted project referred to as Celebrate Now. We're proposing to remove uses which may be incompatible with residential uses, such as industrial manufacturing and high intensity commercial, and we're proposing to clean up the ordinance by removing, removing uses that are listed unnecessarily, and removing regulations which would no longer apply or that are covered by other parts of the ordinance already. And finally, we're suggesting that any change to the preliminary concept plan, which is required for this district, be acted on by the Planning Commission. Staff recommends authorizing a public hearing for this, and I'll note that the extended timeframe to make a decision on this is March 17th, and that the Planning Commission can make changes. And I'll take any questions.
I've got one, Brian. If we asked to reduce that, they're asking for 47%, what if we said that we asked them to reduce it to 40 or 35%? Well, how many houses would that allow?
I'm not certain, I'd have to calculate that.
Could you get that from me, the figures on that?
Any particular numbers, or?
I would like, I'd like to, at 40 and 35%, what the housing would be like.
How long would that take you to calculate?
Not very long, if you, it should be pretty simple math, if you just take the difference of 17% and divide it out by the proposed 1,177 units. So, for instance, if the difference is, if you take half of 17, it's eight and a half, so if you increased it to 38.5%, theoretically, you'd have about half of 1,177 units permitted, so about 600, or around.
That's at 40%?
That would be a 38 or so.
38%, and you're saying about 600 homes, roughly, right?
Roughly.
And then half of that would be?
Commissioner, it's, it's 69.2 homes per percentage point, all right? So if you take 69, and then you multiply it by five, 346 homes for 5%.
Okay. Well, I didn't know we had a math whiz.
And that would also?
That's what you do with your smartphone in five seconds.
That would also depend on the mix of units, if it's all townhomes, you're obviously going to get a lot more than if it's a mix of detached and duplex and townhomes.
Sure. We can get those figures in, if we mix it up then, because I wanted to know, if we mix it?
Sure.
Does that, do you make sense of what I'm asking you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. McPherson?
Brian, I have a high level question for you, if I may. So, why are we changing the RBC to a PD3? Why not leave it as an RBC, but maybe change some of the requirements for open space and percentage of, you know, senior assisted living, or age restricted living? Why does it have to change from RBC to PD3? What drives that major change, other than just, you know, making adjustments to some of the requirements?
It was staff's opinion that with the proposed development being almost 1,200 additional homes in this district, that it's really a major departure from the original intent of the district, being a recreational business campus. That's why we felt like it would be appropriate to consider a redefinition of the district along with this proposal. Now, if the proposal is reduced, then maybe that dynamic changes, and maybe it's appropriate to stay as a RBC potentially, and not change to a PD3. But we did propose this to the board at the CDC meeting, and they did refer it based on the assumption that this would be a change from the RBC district to the PD3 district.
I get it, it'll be mostly residential.
Right. So if this doesn't pass theoretically, then RBC goes away, and now all we have is PD1, 2, and 3, but no RBC, correct? In Stafford County?
If this, if the board doesn't adopt the ordinance, then the RBC district would remain as, and we would stay with PD1 and 2.
But if we, getting you right now, but if you said we've reduced it, it could stay to, if we reduce the number of homes, it could stay RBC, right?
Well, it depends on the board's action, because you could modify the proposed ordinance to reduce the percentage, but overall, the ordinance would still be proposing a change from RBC to PD3 as directed by the board.
Okay.
If you remember our conversation last time with the developer, they really didn't have any other plans, once the golf course went away, they really didn't have any other plans for any recreational, other recreational things to add to this. If they were going to come in and say, well, we're going to take away the golf course, but we're going to put an indoor field house, or we're going to take away the golf course and put five soccer fields, there may be some benefit of leaving it as an RBC. But they, they were very clear last time that they really, once the golf course went away, they really had not investigated any other options for recreational aspects of that whole area. And so, I guess based on that, that information, staff said, well, if you're not going to make it a recreational area, then there's no reason to make it a, leave it, leave it as an RBC.
And the, a big point of the RBC was the business component, the office component, given the amount of offices originally proposed here, and that's, that just hasn't come to fruition, so part of this is sort of accepting the realities of the area. And again, back when the comprehensive plan was adopted, this was designated as suburban, and I'm not sure if part of that was recognizing that a large business campus wasn't going to be very practical or probable in this area. So, some of that, these, these changes are relating to just coming to terms with the realities of the development, should this go through, that it's really going to be a departure from the original intent.
Brian, I don't know if you can answer this question or not, I know Celebrate Virginia Parkway could probably handle that, 1,100 homes, probably.
Yes.
But the impact on 17 is where, there's probably a great concern, so you wouldn't know the impacts between, if that was the case on 17, would you, would there have to be a traffic study done on that, or is it?
Well, there was a traffic study done for this application for the proffer amendment, and they did look at all the major intersections along, pretty much from Celebrate Virginia Parkway all the way down to 95 along Route 17, and they found that with the new signal timings recently implemented by VDOT along the corridor, that they could maintain level of service adequate, at least not further degrade level of service at those intersections along 17 with the proposed development.
And with the, with the construction they're doing 95, that's going to, would help too, right, with the?
It should.
That's, that's, how long is that going to be, how long, is there a timeline for that?
I believe 2022 is the?
95 part of it?
Yes, the collector distributor lanes and hot lane extension.
But there's no access to the hot lanes off Route 17, correct? There's actually no entrance on Stafford County, period.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's the answer.
Even if you're coming off Celebrate?
Even if you're coming off Celebrate, you cannot access Route 17, Route Garrisonville, you can't get to the hot lane southbound.
I'm talking about Airport.
Airport, nope.
It's not even, they're not even going to have access to that.
Stafford County has no access to southbound hot lanes.
Madam Chairman, I think I saw a number of about 4,000 vehicle trips per day as a result of additional 1,170 homes, is that about right?
I think it was closer to 4,700, 4,800, but yeah.
Okay, I'll take that.
The applicant had a study in their package that evaluated the economics of doing the age restricted housing. As far as I know, I haven't seen anything that showed that they evaluated other housing alternatives, such as single family, and what the potential impacts could be. It seems to me that they were really looking to maximize profits, and I'm wondering if we really need to go to a PD3 that focuses it on age restricted housing and allows such a high density development, or should we consider only doing a PD2 or a PD1 and allowing for single family homes, as opposed to high density? I mean, this is really high density development, it's not suburban residential development, this is high density. And so, it bothers me a little bit that they focused on such a high density development, after having spent all this time saying they were going to provide recreational amenities for the county, and that's disappeared, and it just, it doesn't sit right with me. I'm, not a question, but a comment.
Madam Chairman? Got a few questions, if it's okay. You sort of said this, but I'm just going to try to ask it the way that I have it phrased here. Would it be fair to characterize the proposed PD3 zoning district as providing for a large scale age restricted development or developments? Because it might not necessarily be just in this one location, it could be elsewhere if folks apply for the same zoning, if this were approved.
Yes, on up to, close to half of the district area.
Were there any model ordinances the county used in creating this proposed district?
There was none.
Are there any age restricted developments you're aware of locally or across the state that would be similar to what's being proposed here?
None come to mind, I'd have to research that.
Under the existing RBC zoning district, it indicates that no more than 30% of the acreage can be retirement housing, and no more than 10% can be commercial. So what, what is supposed to constitute the other 60% of that district?
Office uses would be the largest component of that, because I think it says commercial or retail as the maximum of 10%, which allows for office development on the remaining percentage.
Okay, and, and office development is typically a, potentially an economic driver or net positive?
Yes, and tad on that, of course, you'd have the open space as well, which this district required a significant percentage of.
And, and again, how does the max usage change under the PD3 category, the split?
It would be up to 47% retirement housing.
Okay, and besides allowing another 17% of the acreage to be retirement housing, what other significant changes are proposed besides the performance standard changes?
Well, we're proposing to remove several uses, the higher intensity uses that I mentioned before. We're also proposing to clarify the district open space requirement, which is a major change, and we're also just cleaning up the ordinance in general, and as I mentioned before, we would require any changes to the, the concept plan to be reviewed and acted on by the Planning Commission, whereas now, that's not necessarily the case.
And is multifamily currently allowed in RBC?
With a conditional use permit.
And what, what's the maximum density per acre?
16 units.
Okay, so that's not changing from RBC to PD3?
Not as proposed.
Would the applicant be, is the applicant close to their current capacity in terms of residential units at 30%?
They are, they are pretty much.
So they couldn't, they couldn't build one, or close to one additional house?
I think they're at 29.7 something.
We said it at the last meeting when we had to approve the other one, it's pretty darn close, maybe a half a house.
Okay, and, and based on the potential yield, what's the maximum number of development that someone could build on 500 acres under the proposed ordinance?
Well, if it's the ordinance by itself, the district allows for up to seven dwelling units per acre, so 500 times seven.
Okay, and again, I'm just looking at this in, in the context of not just Celebrate Virginia North, and how that might change, but how the zoning could be applied somewhere else.
I will add that, of course, with the proposed proffer amendment, that number would be limited for this area.
Right, but again, we're not, this is not just exclusive to a specific rezoning, but just the construct itself. Can someone build a large scale retirement community in Stafford without the creation of a new PD3 zoning category?
Well, there's the R5 district, but I believe that has a maximum acreage requirement, if I'm correct. I want to say it's 15 acres, and that allows up to 15 dwelling units per acre, otherwise, well, I'm not sure what, which other zoning categories allow for?
I'm going to ask Jeff, because I, other zoning categories might not be restricted or limited to age restricted, but they could be if that's what the applicant wanted. So, under the county's current various land use categories, what other categories could be used by somebody if they had a 500 acre plus parcel that they wanted to build?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Appicello, there's several residential zoning classifications that allow retirement housing with a conditional use permit, so someone could, in theory, rezone to R2 or R3 zoning category, receive approval of a conditional use permit for a relatively large project.
Okay, I'm sorry, just a couple more questions, Madam Chairman. Has the county or anyone else conducted any studies demonstrating the need for large scale retirement developments in Stafford?
We have not.
And have we conducted any studies on the amenities seniors typically want and need in large developments?
Staff has not done that.
Do we know what kinds of impacts large scale retirement communities have on public infrastructure and services?
Well, we know that they're, they're going to be less than your typical single family, but there's not been any detailed analysis that I'm aware of as to exact.
And, and how do we know? I mean, I just came from Florida, and certain communities in Florida that are almost all retirement related, and I can tell you that retirees actually demand a lot of services, because, and I'm not trying to be pejorative, but what are they going to do during the day? They're going to go out, they're going to go to the library, they're going to use various public services, they're going to go to parks, probably even more so than families who are working, they're going to want to have those kind of amenities and activities available to them. So when we say that, and I'm just basing it on my experience, having lived in Florida and having just visited Florida, that it's not necessarily a truism that they demand less, except for education, all the other services they might actually have more of an interest in, and utilize in more consistently than, than a family would, because they're not working during the day, they're retired, they need something to do during the day.
There are some studies we can point to, the IT manual, for instance, Institute of Transportation Engineers, which does evaluations of traffic generation from these types of developments. They put the, the generation for retirement communities, age restricted communities are around four trips per unit, whereas your typical single family, non-age restricted units is going to be more like 10 trips per unit. So, for certain things like transportation, there are likely less impacts, but for other things like utilities and parks and recreation and those sorts of things, it's not certain.
Brian, you're going to have to tell that to my 82-year-old mom, who gets on the road several times during the day with her one car, so.
I was going to ask him, to go back on what you said about Florida, is it some way that you could get a study from, Florida is a big retirement community that has that kind of, 1,000 homes, and see what kind of demand it has on the regular, impacts it is on the community? Can you, yeah, can you, can you get something like that from, like Florida and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this, what kind of impact? Because I have a feeling that we're not going to get as much, they're going to go to Fredericksburg, they're not going to stay here because we don't have anything. I think Fredericksburg is going to reap the benefits, Fredericksburg is Spotsylvania, then we would, because we have nothing for a senior, to be honest with you, I mean.
That's my theory.
Yeah, they're going to go to the city.
Downtown Stafford, they're going to go to Route 3 and go shopping, and then all that tax money goes to Spotsylvania.
So one quick thing to add to the question that was asked, isn't the Del Webb community that they've got just up the street, isn't that a retirement, age restricted?
Yes.
They built that in the RBC zone, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how many homes are in that location?
At Build Out, it's going to be around 1,100.
About 1,100, no, those are just single family homes, correct?
It's a mix.
It is a mix, do you know what the mixture percentage is?
I, I'm not certain, I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
When you, when you say mix, there's no townhouses in there?
I believe there are, there are townhomes.
In Celebrate?
Del Webb. Del Webb.
I think they're more like detached, like.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner English, there, there are a number of unit types, as Mr. Gooch is saying, there's single family homes, duplexes, and villas. Villas, sometimes people would assume that they're townhouses because of the, the way they're, exactly, the way they're configured.
Yeah, garage, garage, attached, and then the houses. Any other questions from the Commission, Mr. Appicello?
I guess I have one other question. So, again, going back to this cap, which is currently 30% of the total acreage being limited to retirement housing, do we have any other zoning categories that limber, limit the percentage that could be built on that particular type of land use category? And I'm talking about large scale developments.
Not that I'm aware of, not in the same way that this district does.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Randall?
Yes, is, is the intent to go through the ordinance tonight, is that what we're planning to do?
So, so the ordinance, so we have a couple of options.
Okay.
It needs to go to public hearing by March 13th. However, the application for the villages at Green Bank, the proffer amendment, will actually be at public hearing February 27th. So if we wanted them to both be heard at the same meeting, for the public to participate, we would need to authorize this to public hearing tonight. Now, we could recommend some changes to it tonight, we could go, we could change the density, we could, percentage.
Well, that was, that was my question, because I've gone through this, and there are several things that I think need to be fixed in order, in order to make it more palatable. I don't know if we want to go line by line, or what the process would be to make those changes.
We could go line by line and discuss it as a commission. How many changes do you think you have?
20.
20 changes? Okay, that's an awful lot. Does anybody else have any comment on what they'd like to do? Does anybody else have any comment on what they'd like to do?
I'd like to hear what changes Bart has, Mr. Randall has.
Anybody else?
I, I don't believe I'm ready to make a decision on the ordinance tonight, I'd like to have a little more time.
Well, remember, it's not, you're not passing or denying it, you're, we're just sending it to public hearing.
All right, I'm sorry.
But it has to be, if we're gonna make chain, sweeping changes, we need to make sure that we send the right ordinance to public hearing, because we can make some changes when it goes to public hearing, but we can't make a ton of changes. Like, there's certain changes that would trigger an issue of re-advertising and a republic hearing. So.
I have some, I think that are pertinent to the conversation.
Okay, well, let's maybe just start with like five, let's see how, how we go, let's start with five.
Mr. Randall, can I suggest we work with the clean version, just so we're on the same page?
Yes, we are working on the clean version, the one that was sent out by Crystal, the one that, I don't know, yes.
Yep, let's start page one.
Page one. Brian, do you have, do you know where I am?
Yes.
Twenty-eight thirty-four, uh, the purpose of the districts, um, that paragraph is exactly the same as the paragraph below it. Do we need to duplicate that paragraph one right after the other? Or can we summarize the paragraph under the table of uses and standards now that we've defined what the PD three plan development three district is at the top? I just didn't see a reason to duplicate both those paragraphs.
Is that an attorney question?
I don't know.
I believe the way it is is consistent with how the other districts are handled, as far as defining them.
Yeah, I think that's more format, let, let's maybe focus more on ordinance-specific versus format, if that's okay.
All right, and I noticed that in several of the, you, you have removed a couple of things, um, in the uses permitted by right. Specifically, the, well, the uses permitted by right, in the clean version, it doesn't have it on here. If you look at the, um, the part that was taken off, you'll see that there's, um, bocce ball fields, for example, that was taken off a use by right. So, basically, what you're saying is that the developer couldn't go in, in the recreational area and put in a bocce ball court to help with the, as part of the recreational amenities.
Yeah, that's a, a good point of clarification. All of the recreational-type uses that are proposed to be removed are, were just removed because they're listed unnecessarily. They're already covered under general terms of the by-right uses, such as active recreation, recreational facility, those other uses that are staying in the ordinance. So, that was more of a cleanup, um, those specific recreational uses would still be permitted under the general terms.
So, the term, so you, you got rid of them because they now fall under the active recreation term? Is that, is that the reason?
They were listed, they weren't necessary, yes.
Okay, so, along with that, then, you have, you've removed, um, heli pads, um, and yet you've talked to them. Is that, is that still authorized by right?
Um, I believe, my understanding is of that is-
It's conditional use permit that you took off, yet in the ordinance, uh, I can't find what page it is. It's, uh, page, page nine of the actual ordinance. You talk about, um, the development use of heely stops, heli stops. And I'm assuming that's the same thing?
Yes, uh, discussing that with the zoning administrator is my understanding that we can't, um, by federal or state law, I forget, we can't regulate the placement of heli pads. However, with the performance standards, we can, um, ensure that certain criteria are met when they are placed or constructed, does that make sense?
Not, well, I just, so, it's in the ordinance as a, as a standard.
Yes.
But yet, we've taken it out of their ability to do it by right or by use, or, or by conditional use permit. So, how would they put one in there if it's not allowed by right or by a conditional use permit?
I would have to defer to Jeff on that, I, I'm not sure if, uh, the perspective that we can't regulate them means that it has to be listed as a by-right use or not.
With this ordinance amendment, it would eliminate the prospect of having a heli stop within a project. So, it would not be allowed to be, um, placed in, within that project, at all, period.
Right, that, that was my under, that, that was kind of the premise I was going under, which then would mean on page nine, we wouldn't need to have the number thirteen, which talks about, um, where they would be and, okay, so.
So, are you proposing to take that out?
Well, I, I believe by the fact that they've removed it from a conditional use permit or by right, that it would then need to come out.
Yeah, okay.
And where is this on page nine?
Uh, number thirteen.
So, we're, remove all of thirteen?
I would remove all of thirteen. Yes.
Okay.
All right, next.
Are you rushing me?
A little bit, twenty, that's three.
You have some place to go at seven thirty?
That's three.
You're counting. Okay, so, in the conditional use permit, you mentioned, um, a public parking lot. What's your definition of public parking lot? Are some of the parking lots that are gonna be defined, uh, by the, some of the parks down there, by some of the open area recreational spaces, are those considered public parking lots? And would we need for them to come back to us for a conditional use permit for those public parking lots? Was that the reason why we put them in, as, as a conditional use permit? Because I know there'll be several parks, there'll be several, um, Civil War-type things, and I wasn't sure, um, if, if that was the intent.
Um, sorry, I would point out that during the last meeting, it was not made absolutely clear that those would be public access parks. The developer would have the opportunity to make them available only to the residents, so.
Public can be residence too, just because, public or private, that's why I asked about the definition of public. Private being, this is mine, public being, it's used for more than one person. Uh, I could have several residences, residents go down there and it'd still be a public parking lot by definition of it not being private. So, I just wondered what our definition was that would force a conditional use permit.
Uh, the definition of the ordinance of a, a public parking lot is parking area forming the principal or accessory use of a lot available to the public or as an accommodation to employees, clients, or customers of a use on an adjacent or nearby lot with or without a fee being charged, but shall not include any area wherein vehicles for sale, repair, or temporary empowerment are kept or stored.
What's the sense of the commission on this, do you wanna leave it? Anybody have an issue? All right.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, next one.
That's fine. We talked at our, and Jeff, this probably is a question for you in intensity. In the next section under Charlie, um, it's not minimum open space ratio anymore, it would be maximum lot coverage. Is that correct, Jeff, once we, if we move that forward with what, with the, the cluster definitions?
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Randall, yes, we are looking at another code amendment which would change the on-lot green area, um, from open space ratio to lot coverage. So, in other words, how much of your lot can be pavement, rooftop, things of that nature? So, that may be one of the things that would have to be adjusted to make sure that, that these work in concert with one another if, for some reason, one ordinance amendment was approved in advance of the other. We didn't create a problem where we undid what we just did.
Right, no, I just wanted to make sure that, that would be covered as one of the things that would need to be changed.
Yes.
Can I take us back for a second, if we're talking about, uh, by-right uses and conditional uses?
Sure, absolutely.
If it's a retirement, if it's a retirement community, why, why would you have childcare centers as a by-right use?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Appicella, when the ordinance was developed as a, originally a business campus idea, the thought process was you're gonna have thousands of people in one location of employment, or one area of employment, and they would need services like childcare centers, like restaurants, things of that nature. So, that was part of the initial thinking with the ordinance amendment. Even in its current form, as we're discussing tonight, it still could be substantial components of office space that could be within a PD three district. So, that'd be something for the commission to consider, um, is whether or not you'd want people that are in this large complex to have to drive out of the complex in order to access childcare.
I, I guess my question is, is more broadly is, is when I look at the uses under PD two, both by-right and conditional use permit versus the ones in RBC, which are we trying to shift to, more like PD two or more like RBC with some, some minor tweaks? And I, I don't know what the answer is, but which, which side of the ledger are we trying to get to here?
And Commissioner Appicella, the PD two district is intended to be a, a traditional neighborhood mixed-use type of community, which the RBC, uh, conversion to PD three would not necessarily be of the same type of community that, uh, the PD two zone allows. The Embry-Mill neighborhood in the county is currently zoned PD two, and, um, you can see that most of that project is residential as well, but there are some substantial commercial areas that haven't, uh, developed yet. And, um, that could, uh, have a, um, daycare component as well under it, that zoning, if I recall correctly.
Again, I'm just trying to look for compatibility, if this is primarily gonna be a retirement community, I, I understand there may be some office and some other businesses. Is there anything that's here that might be in conflict that we might at least wanna push towards a conditional use permit versus? I mean, if I were in a retirement community, I don't know that I necessarily wanna have a daycare center right next to my house without, at least looking at it from a conditional use perspective, I'm not saying to take it out.
Well, let me ask you this question, you're talking about the child daycare, but there-
This is the one thing I'm focused on, I'm not saying-
No, 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 but I gotta, I got something to bring on it, but you've got those, what about if there's an adult daycare? Because they do have those available, um, for adults, but that, how would that fall under? Say you had a, you know what I'm talking about, adult daycares that they have for seniors that have Alzheimer's and they just, a place for them to go, that the spouse may have to, how would that fall under?
Yes, Commissioner Vanuch and Chair, um, Commissioner English, we, we would need to add adult daycare as a permitted use if that were to be in this zoning category. So, right now, it's not permitted in the zoning category.
Well, I'd probably like to add that in there.
But you could add it as a conditional use permit?
It's a conditional use permit, yes, conditional use.
Do we, what do we wanna do with child daycare, do we just wanna move it to conditional use permit?
Take it out, that's my opinion, take it out.
Okay. Uh, under conditional use, is everybody good with conventional fa- facility, drive-through, multifamily dwelling? Multifamily dwelling seems to stick out to me. Anybody have any issues?
Can I back up just one second, back to the child daycare, I was saying, I think we should leave it in as a conditional use, because remember, we're not zoning this as age-restricted only, it's, it's a PD three. So, that doesn't mean that future PD threes are gonna be, you know, all, you know, retirement communities. So, I think we should leave as a conditional use, child, child daycare, this is my opinion.
I, I'm okay with moving it to CUP.
I don't think you can do fa- a family, this is not a family, uh, single-family, whatever, family-type development, right? It's retirement, it is by its very nature a retirement-focused subdivision.
It could be.
No, it is.
Yes, um, there is an allowance for executive housing lots, uh, around fifty or so, and then, uh, multifamily, but then, again, only with a conditional use permit.
So, I guess that point, if you go to the definition, you, you talk about suburban-style development with a significant age-restricted housing component. Is significant fifty-one percent, is it significant seventy percent? Do you have an idea what you mean by significant? This may go to the, to the question that's being asked of, you know, if significant is fifty-one out of, fifty-one to forty-nine, well, then you'll have a fairly large number of single-family, regular homes that may need childcare and may need those types of things. If significant is ninety percent, well, then it, then it minimizes the need maybe for a childcare center type thing.
Uh, significant in this case is forty-seven percent. And, um, other types of housing, non-age-restricted housing are not permitted except for the small amount of executive housing and, um, uh, multifamily housing, but only if a CUP is approved.
Oh, so this multifamily could be non-age-restricted?
Correct.
Oh, that's a, that's a new piece of information.
It's on the details.
Okay, childcare center, yea or nay, keep it in or move it?
Keep it in.
Are we in consensus that it stays in?
Can we put it as a conditional use permit?
Split the difference, all right. Next, uh, we, family dwel- multifamily dwelling, Mr. Appicella, do you have any comments on that? Under conditional use permit?
I, I, I'm surprised by what I just learned, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how to fix it, because, again, I thought this was being sold to us as an almost exclusively age-restricted development. So, um, I, I'm concerned about, about the multifamily dwelling being in here at all, if that's the way it's gonna shake out.
And there is another, uh, component to the multifamily, similar to the retirement housing, there is a cap on the area which can be developed as multifamily. And I believe it's something like two and one-tenth percent. It was basically established to ensure that, um, the area they're currently designating for multifamily cannot expand, uh, without a, a change to the ordinance, of course.
But if we take it out completely, they can't do anything, right?
Yes, and then the existing, uh, multifamily within the RBC becomes a non-conforming use, so, that could potentially have complications.
Could we just say, well, okay?
So, again, take me to the language that restricts, that caps out. Okay, so I see it under fifty, twenty-eight fifty-three, no more than two and one-tenth percent of the total land area of the PD district shall be dedicated to multifamily. So, again, let's just take, take a five hundred acre, let's put Celebrate Virginia North aside, of another five hundred acre development, what's the maximum amount of multifamily could they do under this caveat?
So, that would be ten, ten and a half acres worth, somewhere around there.
That's a hundred and sixty-unit apartment complex.
I suppose it's, yeah, around there, that's correct.
So, I, what do, what do the folks think about, about that?
Where in the PD three ordinance does it specify that percentage?
It's, it's section twenty-eight fifty-three, it's on page six of the clean version. Twenty-eight fifty-three, number four, it's the last sentence.
No more than two and one-tenth percent.
So, to add to that, you have forty-seven percent of the total land area of the PD three district. What's the total land area that we can actually build on? What's the percentage? It's forty-seven percent of the total land area, but there may be only forty-eight percent of the land area that can be built on at all. So, literally, there would be no more houses anyway if we go to forty-seven percent, because they can't build, they wouldn't be able to build any more houses. So, if, if they built this, hypothetically, if we allowed the eleven seventy-seven, eleven seventy, how many other homes could be built in Celebrate America? That then would be single-family homes, regular family homes, because they would no more than, we wouldn't have any more room for age-restricted housing. So, how many more houses could be built down there, um, in the land that's available?
None or very limited, uh, there could be a few executive housing lots, depending on how much commercial property they develop, because it's somewhat tied to that. But, um, other than that, they would only be able to construct more housing if they, uh, were granted a conditional use permit for multifamily, beyond what they already have.
Okay, so, so what you're telling me, then, if I'm hearing right, what you're saying is that this forty-seven percent that they're building, the eleven hu- is really the entire amount of building, of houses, dwellings, units, whatever, that could conceivably be built in Celebrate Virginia? There's really no other places that- There's really no other places that they could build houses that would go to the, beyond the 47%?
Yes, with the proposed development, they would essentially max out the 47%.
Which is why, when we talk about this, we're only literally talking about the age-restricted housing because there's no other homes that could be built?
Correct.
Okay, so that hopefully clears up a little bit in that, now, if we go to Commissioner English's comments, and we said, well, maybe we just want to raise it to 35%, well, then that conceivably could allow another 500 or 600 homes to be built down there, maybe not that many. 300 homes, for example, could be built as regular, single-family developments because there would be that room then for those types of houses, correct?
Correct.
I don't see how that works. How can it be just regular, single-family housing?
If we take the, if we take the percentage of the age-restricted housing to 35%, that would give us 12% of land that would be available for single-family, regular homes.
It still says age-restricted housing, so I don't understand how you get that logic. The only, from what I'm hearing, the only non-age-restricted housing you could do are these multifamily capped at 2 and 1/10th percent, based on the way that this PD3 has been-
And on his summary that he sent out, item six, it says, increase the allowed percentage of district land, which can be developed with retirement housing, from 30 to 47%. This is retirement housing from 30 to 47%. We're not saying reduce the retirement housing to 35% and allow other housing to be 47%.
So if-
Because I heard you say the difference of 12%.
If the commission decided on 35%, then they could have 5% more of retirement housing development.
Versus the 17 they're asking for now?
Correct.
And 0% more of additional multifamily or single-family dwelling houses?
Correct.
Okay.
At this site. And again, you got to separate the two, what's happening at Celebrate Virginia North versus what could happen if this gets placed somewhere else. Right? And that's why I brought it up, because, again, someone could have a 500-acre development in North Stafford that has 2/10th and 1/10th percent multifamily, which is the equivalent of 160-unit apartment complex.
All right, now I'm, okay, so let me make sure I'm correct. So let's go down to Celebrate Virginia, because that's what we're talking about. We take it to 35%. Doing the math that we just did, that would then allow for, based on the, they would only then be able to put 400 homes down there, not the 1170.
Sure.
Right? Approximately.
Not the way, not the way the ordinance specifies, because the ordinance still specifies 2 and 1/10th percent maximum of multifamily.
Okay, let me finish.
So that remaining percentage would have to go to open space. There's no other development option.
Is that what it says?
These are-
That's not what it says. It says there's a limit of multifamily homes. What's a multifamily home? It's apartment, right? It's an apartment.
It's apartments or townhouses.
Apartment or townhouses, right?
Not townhomes.
So, sorry, so you're saying it would allow-
Apartment or town-
Single-family homes.
Yes, let me finish. So 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/10th percent, and I, we have, and on my list is where we came up with 2 and 1/10th percent.
Mr. Appicella, go ahead.
Just hypothetically, Bart, bear with me, man. Look at 2853, number four, and if you change the second sentence, just hypothetically, it would, to say 35%, I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, it would read, no more than 35% of the total land area of PD3 district shall be dedicated to retirement housing.
Yes.
Okay? Then you've got another 10%, up to 10% that could be commercial.
Yes.
Right? Then you've got some small piece that could be executive housing, right? So what would the rest be beyond that?
Open space or office-type uses.
Right, so there's no single-family, you know, regular family housing.
Why couldn't it be single-family homes?
It is restricted by-
It's not permitted as a use in the district.
It's not what it says at the top, though, right? The top says significant amounts, it doesn't say, it doesn't say only. That's why, that was the reason why I asked the question at the beginning. So if you go to the beginning, it says, which are suitable for planned with a significant age-restricted housing component and commercial uses that serve the immediate community. Doesn't say total, doesn't say all, it says significant amount.
If what you said were true, we wouldn't be here today.
Yeah, they would have built all the single-family.
We wouldn't have no, because this is what's in RBC right now. No more than 30% can be age-restricted housing. No more than 10% can be commercial.
So why are we here, then?
Because they're trying to get a delta between 30 and 47% to get their 1170 homes.
And then the rest are recommended changes with staff. So let's, let's table that one, and let's keep going if you have more changes, because I think we're getting wrapped around an axle here. So are we, we're leaving multifamily in conditional use permit? That's where we are right now.
Family as a CUP.
As a CUP.
Yeah.
Okay, we're adding childcare and adult daycare centers to that. Now, anything else? Item C under requirements. Anything else, Bart, on your list?
Yes?
Okay.
All right, so the retirement housing, the setbacks, I don't know if we want to go through the setbacks, but there's-
What are, what's different in this one versus the old one?
The table, the lot standards table, there's no changes proposed.
So there's no changes? So do we want to mess with it? It's already been there?
All right, I guess I didn't have a chance to look at the old one when it was, just for an example, if you look at this, you look at the duplex, right? And you talk about the 25-yard, it's a 25-yard front setback, that's 75 feet for duplex.
It says feet.
It's feet.
Minimum yards, and then it's in feet.
It says yards, hold on.
Right below it in parentheses, it says feet.
Yeah, and then you go to the, and then you go to the third level, it says maximum height, and in parentheses, it says feet. So only thing that's, the only thing, the only time it's feet is when it's in parentheses. Yard is what?
Turn your mic on.
Yeah, side is yard, that's correct. Back is yard. Front is yard, that's correct. Front is yard, side is yard, back is yard, maximum height is feet, minimum height is-
Yard isn't the measurement. It's front yard, backyard, side yard.
That's just how the areas are referred to.
Okay. I think we're getting into subcommittee things. So, all right, what else do you got?
Uh, yeah. Where did the 2 and 1/10th percent come from?
That was established when multifamily uses were added as allowed through a conditional use permit, when the apartment complex was proposed. I forget when that was, but a number of years ago.
You're on item number four on the next page, right, Bart? Is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
It was established as part of that proposed multifamily project.
But there was no, but there, just, okay, so we don't have a basis for it, though? It was just something that we've used before?
It's just something that was set to restrict further expansion of multifamily uses.
And also not to put the existing apartments into a non-conforming use bucket.
Is that where the 1, that's where the 1/10th percent came? 2 and 1/10th percent, right? The additional 1/10th above the 2.
Yeah, they didn't want to put their, yeah.
All right.
Next one?
Page eight.
Mine aren't numbered. Is that the next page?
No.
Two more pages, okay. Which one?
It says three, four, and five. On number five, it talks about executive-style housing. Second paragraph on five, second sentence, third sentence, says, "All neighborhoods shall be, shall but open space or recreational areas." So are we saying that all executive-style housing shall be next to an open space or next to a recreational, recreational area?
That's correct.
Okay, is that the way those current executive houses are built now?
It is.
Okay. All right. Is there, and then in number six, is there a particular reason why we didn't talk about what the clubhouse facility should include or how big it should be? We heard yesterday, we heard last time from somebody that they built a 15,000-square-foot, you know, clubhouse. Do we put a minimum to that? I know they proffered a 10,000 square foot, if I remember right. But is there a particular reason why we wouldn't define that as to what we would want?
Well, I believe it'd be somewhat based on the size of the community. For example, the Celebrate Now project that recently came in, they're proposing a clubhouse, but it's only, I think, 44 lots, so it's not going to be a very big clubhouse due to the small size of the community.
Okay, so we would just leave it up to the developer, then, to figure out what size they would need for something as big as 1170 units?
That's the way the ordinance is currently structured, yes, that it would be up to them.
Is that what we want? I have an issue with leaving it, just let them decide what they want. I would want to put something in there.
I don't think they'll build anything more than they need. That's quite expensive. Non-revenue.
That's not my concern. My concern's not how expensive it will be. My concern is what's best for the residents who are living down there.
Probably go with a, you could probably go with the size of how many houses is going in. If you've got 100 houses and the clubhouse has got to be the size.
Well, right, that would be kind of the thing that I'm, you know, we would say it would need to be 1,000 square foot per, or 1 square foot per this, or 10 square feet per this, or something that would delineate the size of a clubhouse based on the number of units that are being allowed or being built.
But I don't think, I think they're not going, I don't know if they would build anyway until after they got their first 100 homes or whatever it is anyway, before they even look at a clubhouse, right? Is that how they do that? So if you've got, if you go in there and you say they're expecting 500 homes and come find out they only have 100 homes and we're responsible for making them build a clubhouse for 500 people, I don't think that's fair.
It's all dependent on how confident they are they're going to sell those lots. Again, I'm running from a position of, we want to do what's best for the people who are living down there and not let, not be dictated as to what we can and by somebody from the outside. So my recommendation is, I don't know exactly what the answer would be right now, but my recommendation would put something in there that says, you know, for, for this number of, for this number of anticipated residents, you would need to have this kind of, this size clubhouse.
Right, so you did the math before, Mr. Randall, on another item, I think the total number of units. How about if we took what they're proposing for this particular development, which is what, a 10,000-square-foot clubhouse, is that it? Divided by 1170 units? So how about if we come up with a square footage by unit and incorporate it herein?
It's 8 and 1/2 by unit, per unit.
8 and 1/2 what?
Square foot. If it's 10,000, where does it say 10,000? Is that what they proffered?
I believe that is what they proffered.
I don't have the proffers in front of me, so I don't know.
I don't either. Sorry, I don't have that information with me tonight.
Jeff, do you remember?
No, sir, I don't recall.
Okay.
We certainly can research that and get back to the commission.
All right, let's go. Next one.
All right, and the next paragraph on six, it says, "No person less than 19 years of age shall reside in such dwelling unit." I believe in the proffers, they talk about somebody being under 19 that would be allowed to live there for up to 90 days?
Yes, that is a potential conflict we need to work out with the proffers.
Okay, so where are we leaning? Are we leaning to say nobody under 19 ever at all?
Does state law, what does state law require? I'm sure they require something.
I believe it's federal law, the-
Okay, federal law.
Housing for older persons act. It requires, I believe, that at least 80% of the units have at least one resident who is 55% or older. So that's much more flexible than how it's written in our ordinance.
Okay.
Our ordinance further restricts that.
So this says none at all, and we can do that, and then their application says no longer than 90 days, so they can just change their application to no longer, to just say not live there at all?
Or just take out that language entirely, because it's already regulated through the ordinance.
I think you need to leave, I think you need to leave at least 90 days in there for somebody, because you don't know what a situation that they get into. And I don't, by taking it completely and not allowing that, I don't agree with that, because there could be situations where their daughter or something gets killed or something like that, and somebody's got to take these kids on for maybe 90 days to find homes. So I don't think taking it out is a good, good thing.
Agreed.
90 days is, I think, I'd say 120 days, but-
Well, then you're getting into school impacts. They don't want to pay any school.
90 days is, 90 days is what I would go with, but I would not say not take it out at all.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner English, the zoning ordinance already addresses that and by defining what a resident is. A resident is a person who resides in a dwelling for more than 90 days-
There we go.
-in a calendar year.
All right, fixed. Next.
All right, in that same, it talks about, "No portion of such retirement housing shall be built for rent." Are we saying that somebody couldn't buy this and then rent it out? That there's no rental properties in here?
Where's that? What, where are you? Where'd you, okay.
Same paragraph, second line. Is it, I, what did you mean by that? I don't expect a developer to build it and then rent those. They normally don't anyway. They normally, you'll sell them all, and then somebody else will rent them. Is the intent to not allow rental property in that area? Is that what was the intent of the line?
Yeah, I believe the intent was to not construct it as a rental facility.
All right, but we're okay with somebody buying and then renting it within that, within that development?
I would think so, as long as it's permitted through their covenants.
Okay.
Okay, next one.
Number seven, at the top of the next page. Passive or active recreational area shall be located throughout the project, and I would like to add, and within reasonable walking distance for all residents.
I hear what you're saying. Is there an issue with the word reasonable? How do, who makes that determination? What's reasonable?
Page nine, it's number seven at the top.
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Appicella, that does raise a question, because if the zoning administrator makes a determination what's reasonable, and the applicant doesn't agree, then it may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We had a similar discussion in a committee meeting last night, and Mr. Randall's probably going to speak to it a little bit, but our zoning ordinance already defines what a pedestrian shed is, and it has a certain distance of, I believe it's 1,320 feet as walkable distance.
Right.
So would that be something the commission would like to specify in here?
That was, that was my intent. The wording may not be appropriate, per se, but with, that would be the intent of that comment. So I'm okay with, I'm okay with putting a pedestrian shed, I'm okay with putting a distance on there of 1,320 feet. I'm okay, either way, I just wanted to put something in there that said that this, it needed to be walking distance.
So, so if we were trying to get to a solution here, what would the exact words be?
Throughout the project and within 1,320 square feet of any resident? I'm sorry. 1,320 feet from the farthest resident?
Of any residential.
Of any resident.
I don't think we need, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I don't think we need that specification, just personally. It does say located throughout the project already.
Yeah, well, we have examples right now of located throughout the project and not anywhere close to any residence. So to be specific to, we want to make it reasonable, we want to make it so that everybody can get there, and they don't have to walk 20 minutes to get there. I think we should put some distance to that.
What's the sense of the commission? We have, how many feel that we need to put a number?
Have we had issues with this before? Did we know of?
Well, age restricted. So I would say that we haven't because we've not dealt with age restricted stuff before either. So being age restricted, I would say, I would even make it less than 1,320 feet, being that it's an age restricted area and you're talking about people that will want to walk somewhere and aren't 30 anymore.
So 1,300 feet's not very far.
It's a quarter mile. So depends on your walking condition.
Well, these are, this is an active community. This isn't like assisted living. So, I mean, I want to try to be reasonable on what we're dictating. But how many people feel like we need a number?
I don't think so.
Does anybody else?
I just think there's so many loopholes. If you had a picnic table within 1,320 feet, you comply with the requirement.
There's going to be picnic tables all, just in people's front yards. Sorry, that's a lot carved out, that's a picnic table area.
And Madam Chairman, Commissioner Randall again hasn't got, given his committee report, but there's an ordinance amendment that's being suggested, or will likely be suggested from the committee, that would address this issue. So it may be a little bit additive or potentially redundant in this ordinance.
Okay.
Assuming the other one passes.
All right, let's just, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, number eight.
Talks about outdoor storage shall include parking of company-owned and operated vehicles. Would this not fall under the new HB1 and HB2 business zoning ordinance that we've been working on, that we have now for approval? Would that, would this new ordinance, would this new classification be considered as part of that new ordinance where it would fall under the Home Business 1 and Home Business 2 and all the other different options?
Isn't this more in terms of the commercial components of the project, not somebody's home-based business per se?
It would be both, right? It could considerably be both.
Well, the other things are regulated, all right? Because, already because we've adopted, the county's already adopted those requirements. This is specific to other commercial, not home-based business activities.
Yeah, you have the business part of the...
So it's saying if you, if you had, you know, I don't know, I'm thinking of a store. If you had a convenience store, you couldn't, you know, you'd have to meet this requirement.
Okay.
All right, next one?
Nope, that's all I have, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, there was some discussion on this and still not sure, and I think I've heard a couple of my fellow commissioners say the same, not quite sure whether this particular zoning is necessary. But to the extent that we want to put it to a public hearing, I would like to limit the amount of development percentage that could occur. So I'm looking at 2853, number four, and I'd like to change the second sentence to no more than 35% of the total area. So change the words to 35 and put in parentheses the number 35.
Everybody good with that?
What is, how many houses is that going to allow, 35? What did we say, 400?
Just ballpark, yeah.
Okay.
Again, just to, I think we're almost there unless people have other changes. So the one outlier, Mr. Randall, was on your number six. I don't think we came to a conclusion, if we really need to come to a conclusion, on the square footage dedicated for a clubhouse.
Mr. Randall, do you have a suggestion? Can you live with it? Live without it?
Well, I, no, I can't live with the fact that we leave it alone and let them build whatever they think is, whatever they think's going to be, because whatever they build, we're going to have to live with for the rest of the time it's down there. The homeowners aren't going to get together and put together, you know, $4 or $5 million and build in addition to their clubhouse. So whatever, whatever they build initially is going to have to be what they go with.
But let me ask you this question. If we put restrictions on them, are we saying they have to do this or if they do build? Because if you say, I mean, if they, the restrictions are too tight, they might not even put a clubhouse in because they're going to say, hey, I can't afford it. So how would you regulate that part of it? I mean, if they say, if we put a limit on it, okay, you've got to build this size clubhouse because you've got this many homes in it, and they say, well, you know, we're not going to do it because we can't afford it, we can do something smaller.
Yeah, I don't think we're saying, per se, a 10,000 square foot clubhouse. I think what we're saying is if you had 100 units, and let's use eight, eight square foot per hundred, you know, that's eight times 100 is what?
Right.
That's kind of where I think you're headed. So some minimum size clubhouse based on the number of units that are built.
Right, and I, and I don't want to belabor the point, obviously, I'm, we heard from the gentleman last, at our last meeting. He lives in the Del Webb community, and all he talked about for his three minutes was how great his clubhouse was and how wonderful his clubhouse was, and they literally did everything in their clubhouse. Their clubhouse was their center of their activities, right? And so I'm just trying to put something together that says that that same, that same level of activity will happen in every age-restricted housing that we build, that you're going to have the center of attention in that development is going to be the clubhouse. That everybody's going to go there for clubs, for activities, for get-togethers, for socials.
Brian, do you, do you know how big that clubhouse is that's in Del Webb? Remember, it's the same builder, same developer.
I want to say 15,000.
He told us, he told us it was 15,000 square feet. So 15,000 square feet, you said it was about 1,000, there's going to be about 1,000 homes, correct?
1,100, yeah.
1,100. So it's going to be about the same percentage. If you take it down to square foot per unit, it's going to be about the same. So...
It is in the best interest, I think, of the developer to provide a nice, you know, large clubhouse because that's one of the major things that draws residents to these...
And we've seen that, but this is not going to, this is an ordinance for the entire county for the future, right?
So to follow up Mr. English's comment, are we saying we want to require a clubhouse of that rated size as part of a PD3? Are we actually saying you want to require a clubhouse based on that square footage rate?
Well, isn't that how it reads now? That a clubhouse will be?
No, no, it doesn't require that a clubhouse be built. It just says that a clubhouse can be built.
It does require a clubhouse.
Retirement housing, development shall incorporate a clubhouse facility.
And I, you know, I'm where Mr. Randall is. I was an ATOA president for a townhouse development, and the requirement was that the developer put in a tot lot. And so that developer decided that he was going to put in the smallest possible tot lot you could imagine to meet that requirement. So I think in the absence of some minimum, that may be what you get.
Okay, so do we want to just do a minimum like Mr. Appicello suggested, eight?
I got a comment, I got a comment. My thing is, I agree, I agree with what you say, Bart, as far as, you know, they got to have something to go to, but in the end, when all development is done, is gone out, who's, that's maintained, that clubhouse can be maintained by the homeowners at that point. You build something, you build the Taj Mahal, then it's up to the back of the residence, they're going to have to take care of it. So you got to be careful with that because I've seen, just like, well, Steve knows too, but I'm just saying, I've seen people that have closed these clubhouses because they can't afford to maintain them. So you got to be careful. I don't think we, by putting that on them, I think that we're slippery slope because once the developer leaves, it's up to the residents to take care of that facility.
Well, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it's now a requirement. The only question is whether or not we're going to require at least a minimum size.
I think we need to stay out of that, that's my opinion.
All right.
I agree with Daryl.
Okay, so you, Mr. Bain, what are you leaning toward, a size or no size?
I lean towards a size because like Mr. Appicello just mentioned, you could have a developer come in and put in an outhouse and call it a clubhouse if there's not some restriction or specification on it.
So in this particular example, we'll just take this one. They already have a 15,000 square foot recreational facility, so they wouldn't be required. If we made the minimum 10,000, they wouldn't be required to add an additional recreational facility, correct?
No.
Okay. But a new developer who's building another PD3, for example, maybe somewhere else, they, you know, do it under this ordinance, we would be saying, hey, you need to build a minimum of a 10,000 square foot recreational facility if you're going to be building these houses.
Again, we're not saying 10,000.
I know, I'm just, I'm making that up, I'm just, yeah, hypothetically, just so everybody's on the same page. It's not going to impact this particular project, they already have one. But in the future, if somebody else were to build it and they wanted to skimp and not provide one, which also, in my opinion, I kind of think they really need one because then it doesn't tax our parks and everything as much as it would if they had one and our gym, you know? So do we want to come up with a number is the bottom line?
I'm going to throw out a number, 10. 10 square feet per unit, just so we can move on.
So, anybody else?
Can you live with that, Mr. Randall?
If you look at what they've got now at Del Webb, if you look at the 1,100 homes, 15,000 square feet, it's about 13.6 square feet per home. So if you go to 10, you know, it's a little less than, it's a little less than what they've got in Del Webb currently, right now. I think 10, I think, I think if you put 10, so, and again, going back to what we talked about before, making a change, if you go back to make the change to 35% versus 47%, 35% gives you 344 homes.
In this particular project?
In this particular project, which is the only reason we're doing this at this point in time. So if you take 300...
Clubhouse period, it doesn't matter for this particular project.
It's only a 3,400 square foot clubhouse.
For a future PD3 somewhere else in Stafford County. I'm not just looking at CVN, I'm looking at if someone wanted to do this somewhere else, I'm with you because it's a moot point, as everybody's saying, there's already a clubhouse.
Yeah, it doesn't matter for this project.
10 years from now, somebody wants to do the same thing.
There's not currently a clubhouse.
Yes, there is. There's a recreational clubhouse. They would not build anything else here on, at the, at, off Route 17 in Del Webb. There's one they have there.
In Del Webb?
Yeah, that's the, that's Celebrate, that's the same project.
This isn't, we're, okay, so you're suggesting that they're going to build 1,170 units and they're not going to build a clubhouse in that location, that they're all going to go to Del Webb?
I'm looking at Chris, he says there's already two. They're going to, they're going to be building one.
There will be one built down, exactly. And right now it's a 10,000 square foot that you've got proffered, that they're going to build a new one down by this...
But they wouldn't be required to by this ordinance. This, we're looking at if there's a new builder coming.
It is a single development.
Yes.
Well, actually, it just says retirement housing development. It doesn't say that includes the executive housing and the 2.1% multifamily.
They would be required to provide one, but the square footage wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a certain square footage required. The Celebrate Now project, they're providing a small one because of this language that requires a clubhouse be provided. It's looked at from the individual retirement housing development.
Okay, so...
Del Webb has one, this one is proposed to have one.
The 10,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet in the proffers for this development?
Yeah, for this, for this one, correct.
Okay, it's a new one, not the Del Webb one?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So again, I'm going to propose 10, 10 square feet per unit.
Okay, I'm good with that.
That's fine.
Good with it, Daryl?
That's fine.
No? Okay. I think the consensus is we're good. Everybody okay? Okay. All right, well, I want to make sure the ordinance moves to public hearing, so I don't want anything stopping it. All right, anything else? We, I know, we did.
The only thing I have is very minor. In section 2856, it goes from A to B to E. We skipped C and D.
I didn't even add all those, I figured those would all be picked up.
It's a very minor thing, nothing for discussion, just a point to maybe fix that, that's all I had.
All right.
And I believe that's just because sections C and D were not being altered, that's why they weren't shown here. But I'll confirm that.
So do we need to go through each of these changes when we make a motion? Or just the motion needs to be incorporating all these changes and fixing up the language, the letters, you know, the misspellings and misnumberings?
Madam Chairman, I think it'd be helpful for the staff and the public to understand what the commission's voting on.
Okay.
If the motion included what the intended changes are.
All right. All right, so are we done with the discussion so far? Okay, so before us, we have to decide, do we want to take a vote on all these changes or none of these changes, some of these changes, tonight to send this to public hearing in that form that we vote for February 27th, so it marries up with the date the application's coming in?
Madam Chairman, can we get, before we do this, can we, our next meeting, what in February, what's the next?
February 13th, which would then not allow it to be advertised on February 27th. That's why we were pushing really hard to get it tonight. I think it's in the best interest of the public to see it both side by, because it's very confusing when they're separated. Mr. Appicello?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we move an amended version that incorporates the changes Mr. Randall mentioned, as well as the one change that I recommended, to a public hearing at the next appropriate date.
Okay. You want me to go through those changes, Mr. Harvey? Because I did write them down.
Madam Chairman, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, all right. First, first one, we're going to, under A, under 2835, we're deleting childcare center. Under B, under conditional uses, we're adding childcare center, and we're adding adult daycare. Under item number 2855.1, letter C, number six, we're doing 12 square feet for those recreational facilities per home. 12 square feet required for a recreational facility per home built. Or what did I say? What did I just say?
10. We said 10.
What did I say?
You said 12.
I said 12, and I have 10, I'm looking at 10, I have no idea, I'm making things up. 10 square feet per home.
I'm good with 12.
Are you going in order or are you going?
I am, did I miss one?
Well, so you missed 2853, which is on page, page six, changing it number four to no more than 35%.
Yes. Okay, 35% under 2854.
53, number four.
Number four. Changing it to, oh, I see it, it's in, yeah, changing no more than 35, changing 47 to 35% in parentheses, 35, and writing out 35. And then, under number seven, we didn't decide to do anything there within walking distance. Oh, we're removing number 13 under section 2853, no, 2855, I'm sorry.
Point one.
Point one. And that's it. Is that what everybody else has? My pages are all scribbled up. And yeah, and then we need to fix it so it's clerically numbered and lettered correctly.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for reading those changes. Just prior to the commission's vote on sending this forward, staff would like to remind the commission that we do have this pending proffer amendment application, which is showing a higher percentage of retirement housing than's being suggested for public hearing.
All right.
May put the application in a situation where they may need to amend their application.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, I'm not repeating it. With all those changes, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Appicello, a second by Commissioner Randall. Any other comment? Commissioner Appicello? Commissioner Randall?
No, just thanks for obliging me with the different changes.
Anybody else? Additional comments? All right, let's go ahead and take the vote to send this to public hearing for February 27th with all the changes we mentioned. All right, motion carries 7-0. Now we are moving on to item number three, which is proposed ordinance 01837 on the landscaping design. However, that's at subcommittee right now and they have their meeting tomorrow, so that's going to be deferred and brought back to the next meeting. We don't have any new business now. business. Now moving on to the planning director's report. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have to consider adopting the meeting schedule for the year. You'll see with your information regarding the meeting schedule. We have a number of dates that we are changing due to desires from the Commission and/or potential scheduling conflicts to accommodate staff. In particular, as you see on the schedule, the Commission would cancel its second meeting in January, January 23rd, because you are conducting a joint hearing with the Board of Supervisors the night before. The May meetings would be changed from the 8th to the 15th, the 22nd to the 29th. The July 24th meeting would be canceled. The August 29th meeting would also be canceled. The Commission traditionally has one meeting a month during the months of July and August to accommodate a summer break. On the proposed calendar, the Commission had suggested either November 13th or November 20th for a meeting date in November, subject to what the Board of Supervisors had set for its schedule. Currently, the Board has set its schedule for its meetings on November 6th and November 19th.
Do we wanna go with the 13th then, folks?
I'm fine with the 13th.
Yep, okay.
So the second, the November 27th meeting would not be held and as well as a December 25th meeting would not be held, so the only meeting in December would be the 11th.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this, Mr. Harvey?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Randall?
If I could just speak one comment, that I, I will be out on the 26th of June. I will be attending a family reunion at West, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
All right, anybody else have any conflicts? Mr. Harvey, do we have to vote on it? I don't, I don't remember hearing what you said.
Madam Chairman, I don't recall if that's required, but it never hurts to...
All right, let's just, okay.
...affirmation of the Commission.
Make a motion to vote.
I'll make a motion that we accept 2019 planning Commission meeting schedule.
We have a second? All right, motion to accept the 2019 planning Commissioner meeting schedule by Commissioner English, second by Commissioner Boswell. Any comments, gentlemen? Anybody else? All right, let's vote. Callie, the vote. All right, motion carries 7-0.
Madam Chairman, continuing with my report, I've put together a draft annual report for the planning Commission's consideration. State code requires that the planning Commission review its activity from the previous year and report it to the Board of Supervisors. So if the Commission felt that this report adequately reflected the Commission's activities for the year, then staff would proceed to forward this to the county administrator for the administrator to send on to the Board of Supervisors. I have received one correction, which has been made, correcting the attendance of one of the, or a membership of one of the committees. So if you, at your leisure, please look it over and hopefully at the next meeting, the Commission can adopt it as a final document, or if you have any changes, please let me know and I'll make modifications accordingly.
Okay.
Regarding downtown Stafford, the staff is continuing to work with the Board of Supervisors' consultant. The consultant has prepared an initial generalized development plan for potentially rezoning the county owned property on the other side of Courthouse Road to start the process for building a new downtown for Stafford. The consultant has also provided us with some recommendations to change the urban development zoning district because that is the contemplation that the county owned property may be rezoned to a UD zoning category. Staff's evaluating their analysis in the GDP and will have more to report on that in the future. Regarding the bicycle and pedestrian facilities plan, staff is continuing to work towards creating a document that we can present to the Commission. We anticipate presenting it to you in February. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And then for the county attorney's report, I would, oh.
I'm sorry, Jeff. What's, we're still getting these magazines? Is it possible, like I said, to get these online? Still wasting money on these? What's the status on that? Because I think we better, if we can save some money by doing away these, we can access it online, it would be better, I think. That's my opinion.
Well, Commissioner English, it's my understanding that's one of the benefits of your membership for the American Planning Association.
Okay.
I will double check to see whether we can ask them to stop the subscription and just have an online newsletter.
Thank you.
Okay, county attorney's report, just for all of our dedicated viewers out there, we have a new face on the planning commission today, Ms. Lauren Lucien. Ms. Lauren?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I look forward to working with all of you. Over the next several months, I'm gonna be ramping up my responsibilities, but eventually I will be your go-to for legal questions and I look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucien. Okay, committee reports. We had the Cluster Ordinance Policy Subcommittee met yesterday on the 8th at 6:30. I do see they provided us a report. Do you guys wanna just let us review it? Do you wanna go through it in depth?
Yeah, I'd like to go through it real quick.
Well, typically, typically what we do, I don't know if anybody has an opinion on it, we review it and then we discuss it at the next meeting. That way everybody has a chance, because I haven't even read it yet. But does anybody, do we wanna go through it? Does anybody have a preference? Read it first, anybody else? Anybody else? Nothing? Read it first, okay. Do you mind if we just read it first? And then we'll have our comments and then you can go through it so that we were better educated to ask questions? Okay. Next subcommittee was landscaping subcommittee. They're meeting tomorrow on the 10th. Any comments from that subcommittee? Okay. Chairman's report, the only report that I have this evening is I have to reappoint committees, so I would like to reappoint to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Bart Randall, and reappoint Mr. Phil Mar McPherson to the ARB Board. And the only open subcommittee that we're gonna have passed tonight is the landscaping subcommittee, and I'd like to reappoint Commissioner English and Commissioner McPherson to that one. And the cluster subcommittee, I think, is closed out, so it should be good. Other business, our TRC for January 23rd has been canceled and we don't have any minutes to approve, so meeting adjourned.